I'm not going to go by this one.
Okay, we'll be taking notes. I call to order the special meeting of the Verona Common Council on Monday, February 18th, 2019 at 6:00 PM. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic purported to stand alone, nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next we'll have the roll.
Alder Person Cronin.
Present.
Alder Person Gaskell.
Here.
Alder Person Journey.
Here.
Alder Person Kemp.
Here.
Alder Person Cole.
Here.
Alder Person Posey.
Here.
Alder Person Ricky.
Here.
Alder Person Touche is absent and excused.
Thank you all. Next we will move up to item four, public comment. If anyone from the public wishes to speak. Not seeing anyone coming up to the mic, so we'll move on to item five, new business. Item A, we have discussion and possible action regarding the recruitment of the city administrator. And I'd like Mitch, our HR person, to give us a kind of overview of where we're at and timelines and how the recruitment could work.
Thank you. Can you guys hear me okay? So in talking with Luke just a little bit about the recruitment plan, we've kind of decided that that's a function that I can perform. Just do have quite a bit of recruitment experience just in my past previous roles. In terms of specifics, I think we can get to the timeline and talk through that a little bit, but Luke and I were kind of talking about gathering input and trying to get as much input as we can from the council. And just kind of thinking through that, you know, one way that I think, I guess with my role in the recruitment process, I'll really be kind of taking care of creating that job announcement, posting it, sharing it, things like that. But in terms of the things we're going to evaluate and devaluation steps for our candidates, those are things that I think we can get your input on. One way that I thought, you know, just in talking with Luke, that we could probably do that is just over the next week or so, if the council wanted to kind of think of ideas, maybe knowledge, skills, training, experience, that that ideal candidate would have. And you can just, it doesn't have to be in a formal format or anything like that. You can just send it to me and I'll pass my card through over email and I can kind of compile that information and use that to really start developing some of our recruitment materials and it's kind of helping the screening process, if you will. So from an input standpoint, I think that's the first thing we wanted to cover. Does that make sense? Any questions?
Here, Alder Cole.
Would it be possible for you to send us the current position description?
I have it, so I think, yeah, and I can send it electronically too, but I'll, and that way you guys will have my email and everything, so I think that works out.
Other questions or comments from the council?
And I would just say if I can too, with the input you're providing, you know, don't be afraid to, you know, get detailed to about, you know, level, scope, role, responsibility. So let's say the skill or ability you're thinking of, you know, this is just an example, but the person needs to have experience with program management. You know, you can put that in a bullet point and just write out, you know, from start to finish or making sure they're delegating during this, you know, any notes I can compile because there's different phases of the recruitment process where we can work that in. And that's something that, you know, I can do and help with. And if I have questions, I might reach back out. But, you know, specific or general as you want to be, I think it'll just be good to get everybody's input.
What do you think on the timeline? Like how long, you know, let's say we start in earnest, you know, February 25th, you know, you've compiled everything, talked to everyone.
Right.
And then we kick it off. How long do you think it'll take before we're, I guess before we're interviewing people and before we made a selection?
Sure. So I think if I can get all of those materials by, you know, end of the day next Monday, you know, my thought would be to get it posted within a couple of days, get the position posted and recruited for. And look, I think this was something and this is, will be a pretty big factor in the overall timeline, but you know, how long did we want to have this published and posted for? And we had kind of talked about 30 to 45 days. Any, I guess, I think, any thoughts, feedback on that, or we could even kind of, you can add that into, to your email response back to me. But I think 30 is a good minimum. We could go more.
Thoughts from the council? 30 days, 45, 60? Alder Kemp?
Correct, yep.
Alder Cole?
Is... In your experience is, if you leave it open too long, do you just start getting an abundance of people that might not necessarily be qualified you have to sort through then? Would you recommend, like what was your recommendation really for the time we should leave it open?
The biggest concern I have about posting it longer is, so we're probably going to be, we talked about this, but panels of, you know, getting kind of a panel to review the materials and then maybe first round, second round. We're going to have a lot of people involved and I can help coordinate that as well. But my biggest concern is that qualified kind of active job seekers sometimes get picked up pretty quick. And I think 30 days is a good amount of time. I think this position's a little bit of a different story, but then when you start to kind of factor in the other steps that we may or may not kind of go through, it can sometimes put, especially government agencies, at a little bit of a disadvantage. So that's why I'm a little bit hesitant to go too long, but that's where, that's where the recruiting and having a good recruitment plan at the start kind of comes in. So even kind of the last couple of days and just talking with Luke, we have a pretty good list and I think we'll keep developing it and syncing that up with, you know, right when that goes live, sharing the word, getting it out there. I think that's how you can kind of minimize that problem.
Alder Cronin?
Where do you anticipate posting this? Are there multiple sites or professional organizations or?
Yes, so, so far, I think we have, let's see, there was a few of them I had here. So I'll be doing, I think Indeed was kind of the bigger one we looked at, so I was able to work with someone today. And it's actually a free post. They can, they actually allow you to use their website to show the advertiser recruitment and it gets redirected to the site we use. But Indeed will be probably the biggest one where we'll get a lot of applicants. But we have League of Wisconsin Municipalities, CivMCC is another area. We have, so WIS dot jobs, which is the state job board. They also do local postings and then also local Facebook, Twitter, LinkedIn. And that's one that they're going to be able to post for us as well. And that, they get a lot of, a lot of traffic to that site, so, and their social media. I also have, let's see here, ICMA and WCMA. We have kind of our own, own website, own Facebook. And if people too also have contacts or maybe it's alumni associations, things like that, just send me the email. I'll share the link. What else did we have here? The IIMC and WMC, I think it's the Clerks, municipal clerks sites. So yeah, we have quite a few kind of listed out to start, but you know, if people have ideas to really kind of make it targeted, send me them and I'll get it figured out and posted.
Alder Kemp?
To get an idea of what the last time we went through this process, Ellen and Luke, you were both here, and Heather, do you get, and Evan, he's not here tonight, but do you remember how long or how long you had it posted? I remember you guys went through, I think, two rounds for the search. So how long did it take in total?
I don't have an exact timeline. Maybe, Alder Ricky, do you remember?
It took months. I mean, like I was going to say like four months. Is that right?
So, I mean, I think that's something that's workable for sure. I mean, four months till the person even starts, I think would be a good target. But I think the big things are also going to be, you know, who is doing that initial screening and then of the resumes and cover letter, I guess. And then also being able to kind of line up and block time on calendars for different interview panel members. That's going to help me move it along quicker and I think that's where a lot of time gets missed. So I think establishing, you know, who's going to be involved at what point and getting that information to me is going to be very important to keeping us moving. And then there's always the reference checks, you know, that can sometimes be hard to get a hold of or get, you know, current supervisors. So that, there's kind of wiggle room there, but you know, certainly four months is, I would say doable, especially if we can kind of get things organized from the start.
I did personally just feel like we were a little slow last time and it would be nice to keep it moving. I know there were some unique challenges with recruitment last time, but I think, I think a quick process would serve people, or at least where it keeps moving. Alder Cole?
How does the panel system work? So are the Alders on an interview panel or does it, got through like the personnel committee first? How does the whole process work once you have narrowed it down or?
I think that's something we can determine, that we can determine in general. In the past, I believe the whole council had input and I kind of, I wouldn't want to turn anyone away because City Admin is a really big deal for the city. And so I would want anyone who wants to have a say in it to be able to have a say in it. We could potentially have initial screening done through the personnel committee. And then when we bring people in for interviews, basically we try to schedule around everyone's schedule. I know the last time we had a sort of meet and greet with all the candidates at the senior center and, you know, there's a chance for, and then there was of course a chance for the candidates to meet department heads and things like that. So it's very much, you know, we're trying, you know, to recruit people, they're trying to impress us. So it's a very get to know you kind of process. But I would want anyone who wanted to be involved to be involved.
Okay.
Do people, do people have preferences? Smaller committee, bigger committee?
And you can get involved at different parts too, you know, whether it's the screening or?
I'm interested in being involved.
Alder Gaskell and then Alder Journey?
While I think it makes sense to have everyone involved, we won't get that done in a month. So that's part of just recognition of if we, trading off involvement for getting the process taken care of in less than six months.
That's a fair point. Alder Journey?
Is your microphone? It's important that city staff also be involved in the interviews.
Yeah, Mitch, do you have some?
Yeah, and I think, I think that's something too where, the part where that can get tricky is we want to make sure they're not applicants first too, in some ways. So, so you know, that gets hard to plan because, you know, we, in some cases, we might not know that until, you know, the job posting comes down. So with the city staff kind of getting involved, I have some ideas just, you know, maybe that's more of in the interview process. Or maybe, you know, second round interviews, they meet with kind of a more standard interview panel where they're answering, you know, answering questions and then there's kind of a staff panel afterwards where it's just the different department heads that get to kind of ask questions, maybe a little more informal, still job-related things. But that's a way we could, we could, I guess, address that issue.
Alder Cronin?
Speaking of that, in this input process that we're doing this week, is that also being extended to department heads to offer some input on what they think a good candidate might look like?
It could be. Is that something that people are interested in?
Yep.
So.
Yeah, I think, again, I think the other part to that too is just with, you know, if I'm using some of this stuff to kind of develop our screening, I guess our screening materials, they might have kind of an idea. I mean, in the end, it's, there's only, I guess, so many job-related things that, you know, we're probably going to be testing on. But I mean, in the end, I think that's, that's your decision. And we can, again, we can always get them involved with, you know, the interview stage too.
Alder Posey?
Just my opinion, I really think that gathering that information from as many people at this point to figure out what are those qualities we're looking for and letting that dictate what our process is. Because then, once we know what exactly we're looking for, whether we're doing large panels or smaller groups to interview first to find those qualities initially, so we're not getting so stuck in the weeds that we don't find that right person doesn't come to the top because we're looking for one quality too early in the process and not a different one. So kind of looking at what between the staff and all of us are saying from that perspective, that's, so.
Okay. Alder Cole?
I've had quite a bit of experience hiring as well. And I found as far as like, in my experience, the initial screening process is best done if you have like, like a rating system, like you have your KSA's, your knowledge, skills and abilities. And you're like, here's our top. And you go through, you have like a smaller group vet those and you kind of like rate them. And if they get like a 90 or above or whatever the rating panel scale is, then that can go to like the larger group. And that would be a way to like hone the process in and keep it shorter and really focus in then on the candidates for interviews that really do have the skills and abilities that we're actually looking for.
Correct, yeah. And I think that's, and when I, and I should maybe clarify, that that initial screening group, the ones looking at the res, in my mind, that would be that first scoring. So what I will do is I'll develop some sort of scale. So, you know, maybe depending on the, depending on the applicant pool size, it might be a number scale, it could be a pass fail, something like that. But yes, and then we can take the top 10 or something like that, we make that decision. And that way we're not locked into interviewing, we're inviting, you know, 65 people and to interview with two panels of five people. You know, that's a lot of time. So, so yeah, in the scale, the way those scales work, sometimes it's helpful to kind of see what we're testing on first to kind of make that. You could be strategic with it too, like what types of skills make this person, you know, here's some minimum things and then this makes them go to the top. And that's why I'm kind of, you know, the skill I want to see or the skills I want to see from everybody, but then, you know, expanding on that, like what's really going to, you know, is there something that's going to set this person? They might have that minimum qualification, but you know, this is something that might get them higher. And I'll do my best to kind of get all of that, all of that compiled and use it in our evaluation process.
Do you think you'd be able to have all that stuff ready in time for the council meeting on Monday? So we could kind of have the knowledge and then make a sort of decision on how we can move forward?
So are we, are we asking everybody to, to have their feedback by Monday?
Yeah, or Friday?
Probably by Friday, I would think.
Friday. We don't want to drive you insane, but.
No, yeah, no, that's fine. That's, that's fine. But yeah, Friday would be helpful, yeah. It'll just probably take a while to kind of read through some of it, but Friday is perfectly fine. And, you know, I think too, you know, as we go through the process, I don't know if there is, you know, later on, one point of contact, two, I can ask for clarification, something like that. If somebody wants to be the chair, that, that might help. But once we get all that input from everybody, I'll be able to kind of compile it and go from there.
I think, yeah, if you're, this will make more sense once we have the process laid out. But I mean, if you're going for a point person, I'd say the Personnel Chair, Alder Gaskell or myself as the mayor.
Okay.
Both of us. And then of course, obviously with, with email, it's easy to go back to if you're, you know, confused about someone's info, you can just go right back to them and say, I don't get this. Alder Ricky?
Do you think it'd be a good idea to send us this preliminary list that you made with the mayor?
Of the timeline or?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would say send whatever information you feel is more or less final.
Yeah, I think just because some of it, we're kind of mapping out here, I didn't have dates in it necessarily, but I can kind of map it out after this discussion of kind of what our timeline would work or kind of look like in the major steps.
Other thoughts from the council? Anything else to add, Mitch? Do you feel like you have enough to?
Yeah, I really, I really think, you know, just sending me those, those skills or those, you know, abilities, training, things like that. Also, even throughout the process, if you think of a place where I can share the link that, you know, there might be qualified candidates, let me know and I'll, I'll get it done. And then also, I think with the timeline that we were just kind of talking about, what I can maybe do is project, you know, what those interview, those weeks of interviews would be. And then maybe if people wanted to kind of commit either way or kind of look at their calendars to see and just hold that time, I think that would be helpful as well.
Excellent. Alder Cronin?
This is farther down the line, but since I'm assuming that there may be more interest than just people in the greater Madison area, do we have any requirement as to if we were to make an offer, how soon or how quickly the person would have to be able to be in that position?
Not that I know of.
I mean, that's completely up to us. So we are, I mean, if it's, you know, I think that's the kind of thing, at least in my opinion, could be negotiated where if it's like, if it's a month or two difference, that's fine. But if someone's like, I can't stay there until next year, it's like, all right, we're probably have to go with someone else then.
I presume, I presume in the job description, we'd, we'd have an anticipated start date, so presumably people applying would know that that's what we're hoping for.
Yeah, I think so. Or at least some general.
Yeah, estimated start date is, you know, middle of whatever, April, May, whatever it would be.
Alder Cole?
How would it work if we did have out-of-state applicants as far as the interview process? Would they be required to come here in person or would we provide some kind of like Skype interview? Have you ever done anything like that in the past?
Mitch?
That's a good question. So we can do Skype. I mean, I've done Skype before, but I mean, that's more of a preference. I think I would defer probably to the, to the chair. I, you know, Skype's doable.
I think for a first interview, that's perfectly logical, but definitely anybody who is coming through the final cut, we need to meet face to face. And probably, I would anticipate it'd be more than just us. I would like them to even do, you know, a presentation to the staff or something like that. Just try and get as much coverage and experience for that person. That, that's what makes sense to me, so.
Okay. Other thoughts? All right. We'll be talking about this again next week. And next we'll move on to...
Mr. Mayor?
Yep, sorry.
If we can get some sort of summary of what did happen last time sent to us, you know, what was the general, how it went last time? I know we had a consultant onboard, but there, I'm hoping there's some sort of record somewhere that could be shared with the rest of us.
Do you want to see what you can find, Mitch?
So I've, I've been looking, but I will continue to look. Yeah.
Okay. Last chance. All right. We'll move on to 5B, discussion and possible action regarding the appointment of an interim city administrator. Does anyone want to say anything or should we move into closed session? I expect we'll have probably some sort of declaration after the closed session. Comments, motions?
Do we know who it is?
Well, that's what we would kind of just talk about in closed session and then, you know, what we're going to offer them and this and that. And then coming out of open session, if we extended an offer, we would, you know, say it publicly so everyone could know. Alder Gaskell?
I'll make a motion to go into closed session to discuss the appointment of an interim city administrator.
Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Alder Kemp? Alder, Alder Gaskell?
Yeah, I need to pull up the language, so just give me a second, please. Okay, ready? Here we go. Common Council may convene in a closed session for discussion and permissible action regarding appointment of an interim city administrator as authorized by Section 19.85, Paren 1, Paren C of the Wisconsin statutes to consider employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee subject to the jurisdiction or authority of the city of Verona. Common Council may reconvene in open session to discuss and take action on the subject matter discussed in the closed session.
And it was seconded by Alder Kemp. This will be a roll call vote.
Alder Journey?
Aye.
Alder Kemp?
Aye.
Alder Cole?
Aye.
Alder Posey?
Aye.
Alder Ricky?
Aye.
Alder Cronin?
Aye.
Alder Gaskell?
Aye.
And if no one has any objections, I'd like Mitch to stick around since he's HR and we want to keep him in the loop. Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Alder Gaskell?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion, please, to appoint Adam Sayer as interim city administrator upon signature of the interim city administrator agreement.
Motion by Alder Gaskell, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Kemp. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And we have a new interim city admin as soon as Adam signs the agreement. I just wanted to, to say two things. One, it is an interim position, but Adam is the city administrator and he'll be functioning with all the authority of the city administrator. Two, I think Adam's gonna be great at this job as, as a city planner. He's, he's proven even tempered in a tough, high-pressure position. He's been very easy to work with. He gets a lot of stuff done. He's a professional. So I think, I think this is, he, he will be a very, very good interim city admin. Does anyone else have any other comments? Seeing none, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
So moved.
Motion by Alder Cole, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Ricky. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
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 Opposed, no. And we are adjourned at 6:43. Thank you.